Thank you. All right, sorry about that, guys. I am trying to learn how to do this and all of this too. And I am not a computer person, let me tell you. Okay.
John, you might as well call meeting door, Mr. Chairman.
I'll call meeting door, ask it, everybody turn their cellphone on vibrate. So we don't have any disruptions. This time, let's do call, do pledge allegiance.
Congratulations. The United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. Roll call.
Hello.
Here.
Paul. Yeah.
Yeah, it's like here.
Not going to go here.
Okay. And Joe is in Pennsylvania. So he won't be here tonight.
Okay. Rubber Eagle.
Rubber Eagle? Okay.
What's that?
Just the way it spelled is the way it sounds.
I'm afraid I'd mess it up.
Oh, Ruck, Ruckrigel. It's used in Germany, they say Ruckrigel. They put the K with the rig. Okay. We say Ruckrigel.
Yeah. And Kubik was.
I'm sorry?
He's out of town.
He's out of town.
Yes, he's, he's out of town.
And what's Joe's first name?
Joe.
No, 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 Paul.
Linda.
Linda, yeah.
That's what I thought. So I've been two years, guys. Come on, tell me some slack. So. Okay, we got Dale Sims as a visitor. And your name, sir? Sorry. Rob Lewis, okay. Would either one of you like to speak to us right off the get go? Okay. All right, just thought, didn't know if you had other major appointments. Okay, at this time. After reviewing the minutes from May sixteenth of twenty nineteen. Is there a motion to accept?
Yes. Oh, well.
I'll second it.
Counted motions, dug seconds, all those in favor saying five, I say aye. Okay, that passes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Yancy?
Yes.
Ruckrigel?
Yay, yes.
Got that down.
Good.
Okay. And talking about definitions, interpretation, zoning code regarding the portable storage containers. Probably has labeled left. What number was that, Karen?
I gave you a printout of it too. It is Article thirty eight, section thirty eight oh three.
Is that thirty eight dash three or? Thirty eight oh three, thirty eight dash two or three?
Eight.
Oh, eight! Oh. Good. Oh, I see it now. Sorry about that.
One of the reasons that I put that on there for tonight is at present that we have at least six of the shipping containers throughout the township. And more and more are showing up.
Hmm.
Um. I know, you know, the code says that they're there, you know, for seven days. But I mean, these, these particular ones have been here for many years. And, but I keep getting calls and complaints of them being, you know, that they're showing up in the township.
When residential lawns are on farms. Farms you can't touch. Because of agricultural business and you can't touch it, I mean.
What if they're just in a field?
Depends on what current field for.
Well, like the one out on Brookville Paramount Road. There's a shipping container that showed up last year. And now there's probably about twenty or thirty beehives. You know, so I know that they're, you know, they have their supplies and all that kind of stuff in there, or their extra beehives or whatever. But you know, according to zoning, you know, it's not to exceed seven days and it's been months. That's just one example.
It'd be right to the west of where Emerson State used to live. His widow still lives there.
Okay.
On a catty corner from Scottsdale.
Okay, I know where you're talking about. I haven't been up that way for
Yeah.
a long time.
He does have it all. I will give him credit. Got it off, it's off the road. I mean, it sits back and he's got gravel under it.
That's true.
Matter of fact, if you painted it white, like the rest of the marten's in that area, you'd think it was another outbuilding.
That's one of my pet peeves on them is they shouldn't be painted to kind of be blend in with the red barns or white barns.
And so there's one down here at this end of Amity, actually, there's two. But the one, he's got part, I mean, it's right behind the barn and it's painted exactly the same color. So it's not that noticeable, you know, obviously it's there. And then he also has the pond in the back and there's one back there. So, you know. But I've had a lot of calls, a lot of complaints on them. You know, and I don't, the, the code is pretty specific on these, but like I said, the ones that are out there, other than this one that just showed up last year, they've been here for years. You know. So. And of course, I haven't, you know, they've been there all this time, so I haven't done, you know, I haven't sent them a letter, I haven't done anything because but, and I'm also not finding permits for them either.
What, for permits would you have to add?
According to the, my interpretation, this is where I'm coming from. The portable storage containers is the same thing, or would fall, the shipping container should fall under that, correct? There is a fee, a twenty dollar fee for a permit for a portable storage container.
Oh, yeah. Yep, it's in the book.
And also a pod.
Yeah, but pods.
And those are temporary, yeah.
But they're fill, film and take them.
Usually, yeah.
Run load them.
Right. But that's one of the issues that I've, I've had. The other one is the recreational vehicles, which when I say that, I mean, like the campers, RVs, that type of thing. And I've had calls where people were living out of those. So again, it's one of those things that one in particular was, it was a COVID issue. They were living in there, but they lost their job. It was a daughter that was living there until their apartment became ready. Yeah, I mean.
That's okay. I, I would consider that an hardship case.
I, I think so too.
Temporary.
Yes, temporary.
And they did exactly what they said they would, as soon as the, because I sent him a letter. And he sent me a very nice email back and explained the situation. And I checked back with them probably a couple of weeks after the deadline. They told me that they were and they'd already moved and got into their apartment.
And were they back behind the front line of, of the residential structure that was?
Actually, it was the garage or barn set off to itself and it was right next to the to the barn.
But it was, but it was back behind the house?
Ah, I think so. This, this particular one was on, out on Little Richmond. So, yeah. And then we have another one that is out on Little Richmond and it is sitting in the middle of a field. There is the shipping container that's sitting there. There is the RD. There's two or three vehicles sitting there and they just in the last couple of weeks went through and kind of mowed around a little bit, but you know, it's still this hot, but it's in the middle of a field. So there's two residences on each side of that and I'm, you know, I'm constantly getting, you know, what are you doing? You know, what are you doing that? You know, I send the letters, the courtesy letters, the only, the next step is to do a nuisance abatement. So I don't know if there's anything else that we can do, because that is not a farm. It is, it's just a lot of land. Yeah, it's just a lot.
I guess, you know, after so many days, go follow the code.
Yeah. Send them an abatement.
Go ahead and do, well, I've got two that I'm going to be scheduling, so, okay.
Okay. Is there, is there another one like that then, two that you're going to be scheduling?
I have, yeah, I've got two nuisance abatements that I'm getting ready to schedule. One of them is in Paramount. Um, it is the property at forty six thirty three North Sulphur Springs Road. I don't know if you're familiar, but the Hicks properties on the corner, the old grocery or whatever that was. Then Mrs. Crowe lives in the, the little white house next, and then that big two-story brick house. There was a person living in that place that was not supposed to be living there. And did a lot of damage. It took, ripped the front of the house off. There's a porta potty sitting on the side of the building. There's trash and debris, all around weeds. There's probably about twenty tires that they've got lined up across the front. So I mean, it's that type of name. The owner lives in Illinois. I, he did come, he's, he's come and talked to me a couple of times and he did finally get the person that was living there, he did, was able to get them addicted. And so August, or July sixteenth, the bailiff removed the person. And on probably a week or so after that, I notified the owner about getting the property secured because there's just a blue tarp hanging up in front.
That's what it looked like before the tarp went up, that there was a new set of doors being installed.
It was. He also put a big window in there and he took it out.
Oh.
So now there's just a tarp and all of the green trash and everything is all around it. And I have sent him a a letter. I sent him a letter of violation. I sent it certified and regular mail. And I have called him probably about fifteen times since then, not a word. So, and of course, lots and lots and lots of complaints on, on the property.
All the way it looks compared to the others.
And the neighbors write to the, the neck, the White House, the ones all need
That's for sale.
They left. They said they'd had enough. And so they did get a young couple that did buy their property, thank goodness. But what people don't realize is we can't just go in there and clean it up or whatever. There are certain steps. There is lengths of time, but the, the community doesn't realize that. And they think that we're not doing anything. So, but these are some of the issues, the abandoned properties, Hicks right there on that corner. I was told, I think, I think it was Mrs. Crowe that told me that she thought that Mr. Hicks had passed away. I, you know, I don't know. But I know on Montgomery County, he's still the owner of that property. So. You know.
Probably got a bunch of back taxes on it then, because there hadn't been anybody in it for five years. It's been a while. Yeah.
So, and of course, that is all, a lot of that is grown up and everything.
Well, one of these days, that back section, the wood section part of it, to me is gonna, well, no, it's gonna be out on Sulphur Springs Road.
Yeah.
It's already got a swell.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but again, those are some of the issues that I'm having and now that I've met all of you, I'll be probably giving you phone calls. Help me here.
Makes it difficult sometimes.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's not that, you, you know, you go in there and you play hardball or whatever. I mean, you try to go in, be very diplomatic, you know, this is and it's not, it's not what I say. I'm going by what the code says.
Right.
You know, what Perry Township says. And one of the other points is one of the rules that I have made since I've been here is I don't issue a permit until I personally go on and I take a look at where and what is going where.
So you fully understand.
I put a checklist together to make sure that everything is done by code. And if it, if I can't check mark all the boxes, that would, and I, and to the point, I don't care who it is. If it's, if it doesn't fall here, then they don't get it.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
So. And one of the things I'm hoping that we will be able to do, I hadn't gotten a chance to speak to, to you, John, is I would like for us to try to get the board of commissions together at least once a quarter. If we can.
I don't know if we need to do it once a quarter right now at this time. I mean, there's nothing major pressing, because it's all in the code. You know, maybe if we do twice a year to start with or three times a year.
Okay.
And then revisit that as things.
Well, some of this, there's some things that have, have also come across in the justice that I can't find in the code. I mean, I know that we have the rules and regulations as far as swimming pools, okay? I'm having companies call me or people will call me and say, you know, I want to put it in ground pool in, but I don't want the fence, I want the, the new electronic cover thing.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yeah, there's one right out west of me.
So. But that isn't mentioned in code.
I still think that they need to have a fence around them. What's your opinion?
I want fences, fences around ponds. As well as pools.
Well, it's
I mean, you know, because a four-year-old, a four-year-old or a three-year-old does no difference.
And, and that's what I'm getting at, even if it's got a cover over it and the cover happens to be open. You know.
So, yeah. I just, I, I don't know. I, I still think for insurance purposes, you, you'd be so wise to have something around it. But I've never had one, so I can't speak.
That's with me.
One way or another.
Right.
Other than common sense tells me you gotta have.
I was told that one down there west of me, that just that cover was either twelve or twenty thousand dollars just for the cover.
Well, if you have that kind of money, you have plenty of money to put in a fence.
Yeah.
So, but what do I know?
Right. And I do have
How many do we have going in? May I ask?
What, in grounds?
Yes.
Uh, I think right now I only have one permit that I gave this year. I had someone just stop in this week. But they don't want to put their pool in until next year. So I, you know, I, and I told them, I said, look, once I give you a permit, it's only good for a year. So if, you know, if it's not something you need right now, then, you know, if you want, we can hold off. So that's what we're doing.
That was good advice, helping them save money.
Well.
They're not ready to put it in.
Time, because if they're not going to put in the pool till spring, then why would you set on a permit for six months?
Right.
And if something happened and you could get it in in spring and you had to wait till maybe the fall, then you're going to have to go through the process of getting a new permit.
Now, if everything else backed up the way it is, pool might be backed up too.
They are after last year. I know some, some guys that's in that business and
Wow.
I have a survey that's come to me that I've, I've talked to two of the BCA members and they both have questions too. So basically what it is, is there's a piece of property that the owner, it's like twenty eight point four acres or something like that. And the, the lots, he wants to do a lot split, but it's almost like halfway. I mean, it's just almost right square down in the middle. And from the best, from the survey, it looks like, because it's more than ten acres, that the minimum of frontage would be four fifty. And it looks like they meet that. But the problem is, it says, and, and I guess this is where some of the, the questions are, it says that the land may be subdivided into non-farm, single-family residence lots, provided they meet the following standards. It says the land will be subdivided into lots shall not exceed twenty five percent of the total land acre recorded as a separate parcel prior to February sixth, two thousand and three. So the question is, the land is, there's a house that, that the gentleman lives in on the one part, you know, if, if, if it was split. And I think what he's wanting to do is to, to give his son or sell his son the other, the other half. But the, the question they, you know, that was brought up is the twenty five percent.
He'd just have to ask for variance on that.
Yeah. And then the because it's not being divided into lots, which is what this says, it's just
It's still, it's still being subdivided into lots, I mean, different parcels. So it would still
It's still, I guess, just the way that it's been read.
It's going to be more than ten acres.
Yeah, because I think it's twelve, I think the, the split is like twelve point six or eight or something like that. I don't remember what the other side was.
Do they, do both parcels meet the road frontage requirement?
I don't know.
And they ought to have plenty of depth then. So, so like put another house and building or whatever in and have some room there.
Because his son, you know, he may want to build, you know, on that piece.
So we Where, where the division is, does that keep the septic and well on the original property?
It does.
Okay. Because we had, we split one off one time. But the well was over up there on Paramount, from Phil Paramount, the well was on the farm, the farm field side.
We didn't, we didn't split it to BCA.
Yeah, yeah. And then it was a hoop. We gotta go back in and buy another half acre.
Wow.
So, okay, just a question.
So, from what I, I've said that it's still, it's like it needs to go before the BCA for variance. Okay, that's, that I think is basically what, what we were looking for. Because I tried to be very thorough and make sure that it is something that has to come before the BCA, not something that can just go through Montgomery County. So, okay.
You're getting to know the zoning text, aren't you?
I'm, I'm learning. It takes, it takes a long time. And I've made mistakes. I'll be, I'll be the first one to admit it, but I do try to learn those and not repeat them.
Have we, have you been able to talk to maybe Jackson and Clay Township regarding the container issue with those, in those two townships?
I have, I, you know, they I haven't talked to Ja- Jackson. I think I talked to New London. I talked to Melanie, I think Melanie Davis.
Melanie Michael? I don't know.
No, I think it was
New London, New London goes under different
zoning.
Well, different criteria than what we do in the township.
Okay, and I did a lot of, I did a lot of research too, as far as looking to see what the, how our revised code said and all that stuff, so. You know, but I can't, I will follow up with those, them and see what they have or what they're doing. My thought was, if, if they're going to get the shipping containers, basically, and, and especially if they're keeping them like they are, then it should be, I think it needs to be treated like an accessory building, like, like a barn. And have, you know, whatever the criteria is for that, it has to be on a gravel platform or whatever.
Right.
But, you know, it's just a thought.
Down there on thirty five, those are the two that I can recall that have been there the longest.
Down there with Smiths?
Smiths. And he's got those on gravel.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're brother's up here, Brookville. Grated off and Kurt and Scott.
Okay. They got one, they got one too?
No, they done, they did that.
Okay.
And the gravel.
Okay. So, so we know if you put them on gravel and put it up out of a waterway, that they're going to be there for quite some time and not rust from the bottom up. So.
But they, you know, they just need to be painted, they need those special lettering.
Yeah, they need
There's one out on Paramount that is, or not Paramount, on Providence, that has a like a, a camouflage tarp draped over part of it. But it looks, I mean, I don't know if it's sitting on gravel. It looks like it's just sitting in the yard, but it's been there for a while.
Okay.
So.
Well. Why don't you check and see what our counterparts next door are doing? So, and then we can discuss at our next meeting how we can change this to get us more modern. Keep everybody happy.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd still like to see it back behind something. And painted.
Now, the one has moved. It was out at the schoolhouse.
Yes.
It was right along Sulphur Springs.
Yeah, I was happy about that.
That was the neighbors.
Yeah, that, that, that one could, that was in the right of way. Or if it wasn't in, part, part of it was real close. So.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, please check in on that if you would, and
Are most of these portable storage units, they've all purchased permits? Some of the people just bring them in, no permit.
Correct. There was a shed and an RV sitting on a diamond mill. And I can't pass any, I'm thinking it, it was set up like somebody was living in it. So I, I sent him a letter, a very nice, sweet young couple, you know. So I explained to him that, you know, first of all, you can't live out of the RV and just, oh, no, we're, you know, we're not. I said, well, the other thing is, it can't sit where it's sitting. It needs to be either inside the building or behind the building. And they had put the shed that they got, which they didn't have a permit for, right between the metal building that apparently had been there since I want to say two thousand and five or something. It had, it had been there for a while, but they put the shed right on, right between that and the fence. And I knew that there wasn't ten, you know, it wasn't ten feet off property. So they did have someone come and move them. So what they did is they took the camper and they put it where the shed was. And then they put the shed where the camper was. So I'm still working with them. So. Yeah. Yeah. But then, basically, I mean, that's all right at this point, because I have a list, but I figured two or three. Was enough to get us started. Um, because I've never sat in on one of your guys' meetings, so.
Right.
You guys have to tell me how this this is to flow or whatever.
Well, what we've done in the past is any changes, we tried to put three or four together. To take them all in bundle to the trustees. And you, you, of course.
We have hearings. We have to have the hearings first.
Hearings and we, and then al- also with the county, prosecutor's office, all of them at the same time. So we're not nickeling and divvying them. Just boom, here they are.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But if that's not gonna be a help to you and you've got one that you wanna get through the system as soon as possible, then. We need to, you know, we need to get on it.
Right, well, I'm okay with, you know, if if we need to. I mean, we're okay so far from what we've been doing. Um, but I I do think that with some of this, we do need to. Make some changes and revise, just like, you know, if more and more people are gonna bring in the. Um, those shipping containers, that we need to to do something about it. At least let let them know it's gonna be treated like a barn. You know, there are certain criteria or, and they have to have a permit.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
So, because I think right now the uh storage or the portable storage units. The permit fee is like twenty dollars. And I know the accessory buildings, barns or whatever is, there it's a hundred unless it's accurate use for our culture.
I I can't see making those uh. Temporary, because if they're gonna, they're gonna pay to bring, have to come in. You need a special truck to dump that sucker. So then you're gonna need a special truck to move it. And so it's not gonna be moved. It's gonna burn it.
Right.
I just don't know how the prosecutor's office is gonna feel about us putting something in about. Blending it in with the rest of the buildings around it.
I don't know why they'd have a problem with it, but, you know, really, because, you know, you're just trying to. Make it more aesthetic to the community.
Well, I agree. Yeah, yeah. We put it in, they can always take it out.
And then, or it should be put back behind the barn, where the barn goes behind the house. The shipping container goes back behind the barn.
Well, you could have it next, just be next to the front, be be behind the front line of the barns.
Are almost all of these portable storage units the same size? Oh, they're not.
They're, you know.
Variable sizes.
Eight by twenties and I think there's eight by forties and there may be. Most common's twenty and forty.
I see. So semi-truck would have to deliver some of them.
Yeah.
There we are.
Twenty footers, they don't have to, but.
The the width and the height, inside height, they're all the same. It's.
Are they?
Length.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I see. Probably what, eight foot tall? Or not that tall, six foot?
Well, see, when you put them up on them, on them uh trailers that they move them with, they can't be over twelve and a half feet.
Sure, I see. And gravel is considered a hard surface. I mean, I can see where gravel would be, some gravel could be.
Definitions, but I would think it would be considered a hard surface.
Gets a permeable, permeable surface. The water can run so down.
I see, I see, sure.
It's not splitting hairs whether it's a.
Yeah.
A hard surface or not.
Yeah, got it. I think hard surface in my mind, see that, but I know the gravel and I know that's permeable. You know. Probably a lot of the community doesn't even think about zoning or permits when they bring in storage units. You know.
I haven't, I have yet to talk to anybody before they brought one in.
Maybe the next time the Brookfield Star is in. You could, uh, after they get done talking to the trustees or listen to the trustees, ask them to put a little blurb in and, you know, if you're gonna.
Wouldn't it be better to put a, or do that too? But what about uh putting a, just a short note, piece, you know.
Newsletter?
No, in the, in the uh, uh, trace bills.
Oh, yeah.
Those are on parts.
Okay, well, that's a bad idea.
But we can also put it on uh the uh Facebook and our website.
Website.
And 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 put it in the Brookfield Store, I mean.
I suppose website. I'm not in favor of Facebook, so I don't even wanna, I know a lot of people probably do Facebook.
A lot of people, you know, they use that for their, for communication.
Do they?
But yeah, uh, I know the township has them and so we do try to, you know, like, the uh. The notices and everything is sent out over that, so if you wanna to zoom in, you know, under Zoom or whatever.
Oh, I see. Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Okay.
And of course, I can put up a notice or a note in the communication board out here. For, you know, if anybody would happen to stop in and and pay attention to that, that there could be something in there about the.
Uh, social, social media will probably be better, but.
They used to send out newsletters too. You do that email now on Facebook, right, instead of newsletter?
I think they they switched to the websites instead of.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
You have to cost them too much money for what it was.
Well, that is true. You're right.
About sixteen hundred dollars when they let us sit on it.
Is that right? Wow, that is a lot of money.
Right.
Probably earn that now with everything you have.
Yeah, that is. Postage and print and paper.
Right.
Oh, I see that. Thank you. Appreciate that information.
Anything else?
That's all I had prepared.
Guys?
Well, I might just add, you were talking about the campers. We had one fifteen years ago. It's still there. They told us it's time we couldn't do. It was set up to do, you can't even see it today. She puts it there. And that was back when John Fuller was seventy. That tells you how far back. I don't know where that's gonna go. And you got some situations.
I thought we were at the, at the point where we asked if they be, they don't stick out beyond the front line of that. Right. If they can get some of it back to the side of the house, then the neighbors. Aren't gonna be ground as much as when the whole sucker sits out in the driveway and this neighbor's going back out and can't see.
Well, yeah.
And yeah.
You're right out of the road, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, some of these issues are.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, they're, they're old issues that.
Keep coming up.
You know, that's kinda like the. Talk about a hard service. I can go build a pool barn. I don't have to have a hard service. You know, how do you stipulate, oh, if I bring in a. That's where, yeah, like I said, these are not new issues. I'm just throwing it and give you something to think about. I, maybe you can come up with an idea, but I've heard of it before and it's, that's.
That corner up there, how many times did that come in front of you guys? Up there in Paramount? I mean, had that corner has been an eyesore for the last.
Well, there's, there's other issues involved in that corner that not.
Well, yeah, under underground issues. So, but uh, yeah, that.
But it's still nuisance abatement.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's, yeah, there's. I don't even know, but yeah, I don't know what to do about some of that. It's, it becomes harder. It's, 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 there again, that's been an issue for. Quite some time.
Long time.
And one of the other concerns that came across too was if that building collapsed. Is Perry Township gonna be liable, especially if somebody gets hurt?
Perry Township don't know.
I mean, that's.
If my barn collapses on somebody, I don't think Perry Township would be liable. I don't know why they would be.
Well, the only, the only. Taxes would probably have to.
Because it's banned.
Pay to clean it up off the road, I would venture to say, you know, and uh.
But I think, I think Mrs. Renter, who brought up a good, a good point, a lot of people don't know what the zoning stuff is.
Oh.
And the rules. I mean, the facts of the matter is, there's a trustee's got a storage unit on the property right now and. And.
Yeah. Yeah. How do, how do we educate?
So.
I'm sure many farmers, including my husband, does not get online and doesn't get on Facebook. I mean, he's just not that computer literate and he doesn't wanna learn either.
But I mean, another thought on that is, and and this, there again, is brought for, so if somebody gets a storage unit, puts a bunch of junk in there inside. Does that look better than the junk skipper?
Yeah, no.
I don't know. And you you mentioned the paint. I've heard that one before. I can build a barn and I can paint it any color I want. So how you, how you stipulate, oh, storage container has to be painted a certain color?
I I'm not saying, I'm not saying it has to be painted any certain color. I'm just, you know, the lettering on the side, it just, you know, it looks.
That on my barn, I wonder. I know where there was a barn here in the township, it had a green one side for a while. And there's no, there's no ruling against that. That's where it becomes hard on all this stuff. It does. It it's, and I I don't think there's a clear cut.
Yeah, but that, the only ruling on. Letters on the side of your barn would be your wife.
There, there was one for a while in this township that had some bad letters on the side of the barn. Stood for something not nice. I just. And.
Wasn't the Ten Commandments, huh?
We had, we had.
There was one here that did have that.
I thought so too.
Flag up there in the middle of Paramount that was up there for about a month, so.
Yeah, I have got complaints on that too.
Did you really?
Yeah.
Our beloved flag? Oh, my God.
It wasn't.
Well, the language wasn't very.
It wasn't this flag.
Wasn't very beloved.
Oh, I got it. I got it.
Well, Doug's made a motion about adjournment.
I second that.
You got everything from us I think you need. I have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Folks, thanks for coming.
Food for thought. You are right.
It is, there's a lot of.
And if you wanted on some.
Yeah. No easy solution. Yeah, it's not.